Barlow.
Here.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Here.
Furl. Jarvis.
Here.
McLean.
Here.
Nesbit.
Here.
Rezegi.
Here.
And Tassiva.
Here. You're not hard of hearing, are you?
Me?
We either yelling, I thought maybe you were hard of hearing back there.
I just want to make sure everybody can hear me.
Entertaining motion to excuse Councilmember Furl.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brim, supported by Rezegi, to excuse Councilmember Furl. Please all rise for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank, thanks everyone for coming tonight. Uh, anybody get a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Any additions or corrections?
That we approved the agenda as read?
Motion by Jarvis.
Support.
Ordered by McLean to approve the agenda as, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Also in your packet, uh, you have the minutes of the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting, uh, workshop and regular meeting. Any corrections or additions to that?
I'll make the motion to approve and put on file.
Second.
Motion by Rezegi, supported by Barlow. To approve the minutes of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four workshop and regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? Roll call.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Furl. Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight to accept public comment regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budget and millage, millage rates. Do you want to say anything before we open the public hearing, Sarah?
Um, the proposed budget is essentially what you saw in the proposal a couple of weeks ago that we discussed in the workshop. The only difference are the millage rates because we did receive the headly information from the county. So the operating millage rate has been reduced to fifteen point seven four four five mils. And the cemetery millage has been reduced to point eight eight four six mils. And that cemetery millage reduction is representative of a ten percent decrease in revenue. Everything else is the same as what you saw and discussed.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Anybody here want to talk about budgets? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, formal recognition and presentations. Mayor Tassiva to present the American Legion Poppy Days Proclamation to Darlene Hopkins, VP of American Legion Auxiliary. Back there, Darlene. I enjoy doing this every year. I think it's something, some way of us giving back to our community and honoring our veterans. Veterans alive and some that have given their ultimate sacrifice. Uh, this is an official proclamation of the city of Hastings, Michigan. Uh, May seventeenth through May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four declared Poppy Drive Days in Hastings. Whereas the red poppy has become an international symbol of the sacrifice of lives in war and the hope that none have died in vain. And whereas the poppy reminds Americans each year that the men and women who have served and whose, and those who have died for their country need to be remembered. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary is the world's largest women's patriotic service organization with memberships of three quarter million women directly related to a veteran who served during a time of US declared war or conflict. The American Legion Auxiliary's mission to serve veterans, military, and their families is carried out through the outreach program services delivered by its members, volunteering in more than nine thousand communities nationwide. And whereas for the past one hundred and three years, Poppy Drive efforts have supported projects and organizations that benefit active duty servicemen, veterans, and their families. And whereas we recognize the dedicated volunteers in American Legion Auxiliary or Lawrence J. Bauer Auxiliary for their continued tradition of service to achieve duty, to active duty military members, veterans, and their families. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David Tassiva, on behalf of the city of Hastings and the Hastings City Council do hereby proclaim Friday, May seventeenth through Saturday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Days in Hastings, Michigan. In witness thereof, I appear unto set my hand to cause the official seal of the city of Hastings to be affixed this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. Sure, sure.
Darlene, move your proclamation down so.
I'm sure.
Hey.
Thank you.
You want, like, say something?
I would just like to say this year, Friday and Saturday of next week, we will be doing our Poppy Days at Walmart and Family Fair from nine to five each day. And if you'd help spread the word, we really appreciate it. And you, this community has donated so much on those two days a year. That is amazing, the generosity the people of Hastings have in supporting the auxiliary and the Lawrence J. Bauer Legion here in Hastings. And I thank you all from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Well, I'm determined to drop these clothes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you and best of luck, and I'm sure you're going to raise a lot of money.
And I hope it doesn't rain.
Uh, I also have another proclamation tonight, motorcycle awareness month. I thought I was going to have somebody here to present this to, and I don't, I won't see them. Uh, so let me read it. And one of the reasons we're, uh, I doing this proclamation is because we're getting into warmer weather in May especially. Uh, the motorcycles are out there and we need to be aware and, uh, you know, uh, it's sometimes easier for us to see them than it is for them to see us. But these machines are so fast, if you blink for a second, they're right on you. So here's the proclamation for motorcycle awareness month. Whereas the city of Hastings has many citizens who are concerned about motorcycle safety while touring during recreation and daily transportation. And whereas the month of May is a nationally recognized month, motorcycles become more prevalent on our streets. The need to be more aware of these presence, of their presence and of, is of utmost urgency. And whereas due to pure Michigan advertising campaign and the modifications of the Michigan helmet law, many out of state riders will be visiting our state and using our roads. And whereas an overwhelming number of car versus motorcycle accidents could be avoided with due regard, with due regard, respect, and awareness of motorcycles on the streets and the intersection of the city of Hastings. And whereas the inclusion of motorcycle awareness provided by a mate of Michigan as a distinct part of driver's education and curriculum and motorcycle rider education programs will help promote safe driving and motorcycle riding practices. And whereas it is the interest of our community and the citizens of the city of Hastings to note the increase in the amount of motorcycle traffic as we enter the warm months to enable the reduction of accidents and injuries involving motorcycles. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David Tassiva, mayor of the city of Hastings, do hereby declare May, twenty twenty-four as motorcycle awareness month in Hastings, Michigan. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand to cause the official seal of the city of Hastings, Michigan, to be affixed this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. Thank you. Be safe. Yeah. Good job. I got such a big hurry and that excited about giving the proclamation off for the Poppy Days, I forgot public comment. I'm sure Joel's here for public comment.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Joel. It's around the township. Um, growing up, a lot of the, uh, my childhood money was tight. And, uh, one of the things that my father would always find it in him to donate to would be to give poppies. And so that's, my grandfather was a World War Two veteran. And something I want to mention too, they have a great breakfast every Saturday. Everyone should go there and check that out. Uh, it's donation based and, uh.
Between eight and ten.
Yes, between eight and ten. Good place, if you're looking for something to do between eight and ten on Saturday, I very highly recommend that. And it's a good way to support the Legion as well. Um, I had some things I wanted to say, but I'll say them at my ending public comment. But I just want to say as the election's coming up here, uh, we're going to be doing a presentation, uh, my group, the Government Accountability Forum, coming up here very shortly, on our elections, the integrity, and how they're processed and so forth. And so I, I would really encourage everyone to keep an eye on our Facebook page for when we put that together. Uh, so that when, when we get the chance to have that here in town, it's something you can go to. Um, there's a lot that's going on, a lot of people trying to cast doubt on our election process, and it's absolutely despicable. One of the things that I think, that I absolutely love about what we do here in Berry County is we have Dominion voting machines with paper trails. I enjoy that thoroughly. It gives us an analog copy that we can go through and determine the validity of our election process. Because there isn't a hacker in the world that knows how to hack a piece of paper to lift ink off one dot to another. And so that's, I, I think it's an excellent check and balance on that process. Um, as well as a number of the people who are presenting the doubt on these Dominion voting machines. Uh, you can check out one of the biggest election deniers, and that's Patrick Kolbeck. He's a person that our sheriff is currently using in presentations to do his best to cast doubt on the election. Uh, he said, and my son just closed my phone up, let me find it here. This is a quote directly from Kolbeck. If you count the paper ballots in each state, Trump wins overwhelmingly. Well, Kolbeck claimed that Kent, Macomb, Oakland, and Wayne counties were the big switch here in Michigan. And if you did a hand recount of those, that it was the Dominion machines that switched the vote in those four counties. Ironically, the Dominion voting machines were not used in Macomb or Oakland. So anyway, I, I encourage everyone to look into that, get the facts, the details for themselves. Uh, our elections are free and fair here in Berry County. We did a very extensive investigation of that and found no problems whatsoever. We thank the city of Hastings clerk and all the clerks out there who are putting up with all the grief in order to, uh, make sure that we can have a free and fair election. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Presentation from David Hatfield. Dave is probably at a planning commission meeting tonight for the county, so he'll be here next, uh, our next council meeting. Uh, items for action by unanimous consent. Uh, we have a, we have a request for American Legion Post forty-five parade chairman, by parade chairman James Atkinson to hold its annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, starting at nine thirty AM. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion approve.
Motion by Jarvis, supported by Rezegi, to approve the request of the American Legion Post forty-five parade chairman, James Atkinson, to hold its annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, starting at nine thirty AM. I assume, uh, if everybody looked at your packet, it's exactly the same as it's been in the previous years. Uh, so, uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Brim.
Yes.
Furl. I'm going to stop that. Uh, Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes, I guess I answered the other one.
Bowers.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, in your packet you have twelve, you have twelve items, twelve invoices totaling one hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred seventy, ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents. Uh, and entertaining motion to receive these and place them on file.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to receive and place on file twelve invoices totaling one hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents as detailed in your attachment. Any discussion? Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Uh, item ten A, under the direction of staff, we have a request from the Hastings Pride Committee to sell merchandise and accept donations from one PM until six PM on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, at Thorpe Plaza. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brim, supported by McLean. Do we have anybody here from that group? Would you like to get up and tell us what you're going to do?
Uh, yes.
Right back there to the podium. Tell us who you are.
All right. Hi, my name is Sydney Smith, and I'm representing the Hastings Pride Committee. Um, we're looking at Hold Hastings First Pride Festival, a family-friendly event with music, like live music entertainment, and booths for resources for LGBTQ individuals, local, and of rural area. We'd like to raise money for, uh, local charities and also possibly the Hastings Gay Straight Alliance for the High School. And we've never had a festival like this in Hastings, but, um, it's had positive outcomes. And Middleville Lowell, Middleville just passed their second, um, their second festival will be happening this summer. And, uh, we just, uh, we see it as a positive direction to take Hastings in. Um, their, the community is here. So if you could have the representation and be able to have a fun day with the town, encourage them to check out our local businesses.
Any questions? Okay, we have a motion from Brim, supported by McLean, to approve under direction of staff the request from the Hastings Pride Committee to sell merchandise and accept donations from one PM to six PM on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, at Thorpe Plaza. I think their request too stated that they wanted to use the pocket part down below.
Oh, yes, that as well.
Oh. Any discussion? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Have fun, good luck. Guys can hang around for the rest of the meeting, but if you want to go, you're more than welcome. Thanks for coming. I'll quickly clear out. Okay, next item, item B, uh, motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven to enact the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and to approve the operating budget for said year and to establish property tax millage rate to support the millage. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nesbit, supported by Brim. Discussion. This is what we just talked about during our public hearing, so. Okay. Motion by Nesbit, supported by Brim, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven to enact the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and to approve the operating budget for said year and to establish property tax millage rates to support the budget. Roll call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Uh, next item, uh, entertaining motion to adopt res, by, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve to dissolve the local development finance, LDFA, as recommended by the LDFA Board, per LDFA Resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-four, adopted April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
Also move.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Rezegi. Discussion. Want to give us a little history on this, why we're doing this?
Sure. So the LDFA Board was formed in the, um, mid to late nineties to promote economic development within the city of Hastings, specifically in the geographic area that's near the current industrial park, um, and some of the surrounding area there on, uh, Star School Road and State, uh, Street as well. Um, the LDFA has been very successful in meeting their goals, uh, developing the industrial park, establishing deed restrictions for that property to ensure that, uh, the type of development goes there that is, um, generating, um, a, a good tax basis as well as employment opportunities, uh, for local people. They've also invested in infrastructure, most recently the milling and resurfacing of Enterprise Drive. Um, as time has gone on, however, um, there's really no additional goals left for them to pursue. Um, there's no remaining property, uh, to develop that hasn't already been sold or is under a purchase agreement. Um, none of the other, uh, goals that they have lined up in the development plan, um, really makes sense anymore, or they've already been achieved. And so the LDFA Board had a meeting in April and reviewed their purpose, um, and what they had done, and came to the conclusion that they've really fulfilled their mission and would like to recommend to the city council that they dissolve. Um, this applies only to the LDFA Board. The LDFA Board members also serve as the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. That authority would continue to exist. It's only the LDFA, um, portion of their activities that would be dissolved.
And did they have a coffer or funds?
Yes, there is an LDFA fund. Um, the fund balance is about four hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, give or take. And those funds would revert to the city. Um, we've had some internal discussions about earmarking that for future road improvements. Uh, but that's up to you guys, uh, how you want to deal with that. But the, the funds would revert to the city.
So those funds wouldn't just transfer over to the Brownfield?
No.
Any questions? Roll call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
And Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, item D, uh, we, uh, we have a motion, uh, excuse me. Uh, do I hear a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, authorizing the mayor and deputy clerk to sign the MDOT agreement for the pedestrian island on M forty-three?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Support.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Nesbit, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, authorizing the mayor and deputy clerk to sign the MDOT agreement for the pedestrian island on M forty-three. Discussion.
What was the timeframe on that? We wanted to install it, um, by June first. I don't know if that'll still happen. And then it will be there. We agreed with MDOT for a couple of months as a pilot, and then we get feedback from them and collect some data and decide if it's something that we can do on an ongoing basis.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't remember like how long that was. Okay, thanks.
Did we get a permit from MDOT for that yet?
We need this resolution to get the permit.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and support, motion by McLean, supported by Nesbit, to, uh, adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, authorizing the mayor and deputy clerk to sign the MDOT agreement for the pedestrian island on M forty-three. No further discussion, roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Next item, consider approval of video franchise agreement with DirecTV LLC for a ten-year period and set the video service provider fee. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brim. Do I hear support? This is money coming to us, fellas.
I'll say yes. Look, I need some, I need to know what we're voting on.
Well, that's, you know, uh.
Are we getting rid of WOW?
No.
Did you support that then?
Yes.
So this is, um, just an extension of the existing franchise agreement that we have with them. So basically, it means that they can use our right-of-way space for the purpose of delivering, um, their video service to their subscribers. So the law says that the service provider fee can be up to five percent. Ours is, has been four percent. Um, there hasn't been any discussion with DirecTV about changing it, um, but I don't see why you couldn't, you know, increase it. Um, that charge is usually passed along to the customers, so that's up to you, uh, what you feel is the most fair. Um, but it's, our total franchise fee for all of our, uh, video services is less than fifteen thousand dollars in, in budgeted revenue. So, um, the total amount isn't, um, it's not particularly large or impactful either way.
My, my question is, we're not getting rid of WOW. WOW is still going to be here, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So they were a, a dish type, they had a dish for DirecTV. How do they transmit now, or how do they do this?
I'm not familiar with WOW or how they operate.
Well, WOW is, you know, what, you know, wired system and DirecTV used to be like a dish.
I know that we do have a franchise agreement with them, um, which I imagine is very similar, if not the same, to this one. This is a uniform agreement from the state, so everybody's agreement with municipalities and service providers are all the same. There's only a couple of things that you can change. Um, really, it's just the, the service provider fee, and if you want to specify a certain percentage for public education programming, you can do that as well. Everything else is basically the same.
See, I don't know, uh, uh, DirecTV is owned by AT&amp;T.
Correct.
And AT&amp;T, uh, I have, uh, my internet's through AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T, and I've been offered through the same service, DirecTV. So I think what that probably most well, some of it, I don't know if some of their. I don't know if some of their, uh, signal comes through on, on, uh, underground. I know DirecTV has a dish just like Dish Network.
Right.
Uh, I think this is one way, one more way of, what do we, the fourteen thousand or roughly that, what do we do with that money? Is that going to the general fund?
It goes to the general fund, correct.
It seemed like at one time when we had our cable access, uh, all this stuff, it was, we were budgeting and using that money for that.
Um, you could have opted to do that. The only funds that are required to be accounted for separately or used specifically for cable access would be if we had a, uh, public education programming fee. We don't currently have that, so we can use it towards whatever you deem appropriate.
I think at one time we had a public, uh, service channel.
That could be, and then you might have had a separate fee associated with that.
Well, I, I think if, if we're gonna do it, you know, costs are going up to the city, of, of course, so i- if we go up to five percent, I would say let's go for five percent.
Agreed.
I disagree. If that's getting passed on to the customers, you're asking them to raise prices for our customers.
Is it gonna be passed on to the customers?
That's what it says. Uh, the fee has been set at four percent in the past, but can go as high as five percent cost typically passed on to the customer. So, I would rather not pass on cost to the customer, personally.
Uh, we have a motion and a support to approve the video franchise agreement with DirecTV LLC for ten-year period and set the video service provider fee.
Ask that you amend your motion to include the four percent fee.
I would like to amend my motion to include the four percent fee.
Okay, we have a motion by Brim, do I have a support by Jarvis? To approve the video franchise agreement with DirecTV LLC for a ten-year period and set the video service provider fee at four percent. Do I hear, do I hear a second?
Mr. Jarvis is going to decline, I'll second the motion.
I didn't second that.
Well, you did for discussion.
You did for discussion.
For the first time.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, there's a motion by Brim, supported by Nesbit? To approve the video franchise agreement with DirecTV LLC for a ten-year period and set the video service provider fee at four percent. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Bowers?
Yep.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
No.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Rezegi?
No.
Barlow?
Yes.
Tassiba?
Yes. Okay, next item, uh, entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Bolt, Bolt, Bolt Sama, construction company to build the Fisher-Autry Park restroom building for a total price of four hundred and forty-seven thousand fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Nesbit, supported by McLean. Discussion. Do you want to talk about this?
Sure. Um, so this has been one of the priority projects for our Parks Department for a very long time, um, well before I started working here. Um, we, you may recall that we adopted the Master Park and Recreation Plan in January, um, and that's a five-year plan. The plan prior to that, five years before, also identified, uh, this restroom reconstruction as a priority project. So there's been a lot of discussion and planning, um, revolving around the need to improve this restroom. It was, uh, constructed in the late eighties before the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed. Um, so if you've been in there, you'll notice that the accessible, uh, function of the restroom is, um, very, very challenging, although, um, efforts have been made to accommodate as much as possible. A lot of the difficulty with, uh, making it accessible has to do with the shape of the structure itself, um, because it's a Pentagon or, or hexagon shape, um, there's a lot of corners, uh, which make it difficult to, uh, design around. Um, the structure itself, um, isn't really designed to be, I don't want to say it's not a building, but it's essentially a pavilion that has walls on it. Um, so that's why it matches the, uh, picnic pavilion that's out there. It's really the same structure, um, which has led to significant maintenance issues because it wasn't designed with the long term in mind. Um, it's really not that terribly old of a building, which is why it's been, uh, impossible really to get grant funding for it. Uh, one of the reasons why we're missing out on a lot of points for the Michigan Trust Fund grant is because it's just not old enough to qualify, uh, to get to the tier that's necessary to get enough points for funding. Um, it's a very heavily used restroom. Um, that park is not really a neighborhood park, although some people can bike or walk to it. Uh, most people view it as a destination park. They drive there, they spend the afternoon. There's a lot of sports teams that, uh, use the park, um, for their, um, sports play. The Y Summer Playground holds their, uh, operations there in the summer, and there's a lot of pavilion rentals for parties, um, all throughout the spring, summer, and fall. So it's very, very well-used. Our park surveys that we've done have identified restroom maintenance, uh, cleanliness and safety as one of the top priorities and things that people want, uh, in park improvements. Um, so we wanted to ensure that a design for a future restroom, um, is very durable, low maintenance, something that's gonna last us a long time. So if you got a chance to look at the, um, some of the bid documents that are included, uh, in your packet, you'll notice this really is a block and steel building. Um, it's very durable, it's designed to be vandal-resistant, um, and keep, uh, ongoing costs low, uh, and be something that we won't need to replace or do anything significant to, um, for a very long time. We have designated two hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred sixteen dollars, um, ARPA for this project, um, so the remainder would come from the general fund. Um, we budgeted four hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, next year for this project. So the total cost, uh, with, uh, both the consultant's fees and the cost to construct is only about five percent higher than, uh, what we estimated, so it's very similar. So we were really happy, um, that we were able to get this price. So, um, the, uh, Park and Rec Board didn't have a chance to look at, uh, the bid, but they did look at the plans, uh, prior to it going to bid, and were very supportive of moving forward with, uh, designs similar to this, um, for the reconstruction project.
Questions?
Was there a breakdown on what it took to remove the existing building prior to the construction?
Um, did they bid the demo separately?
I'd have to look at the, uh... I think they did. I think they did include that in the bid, but I'm not one hundred percent sure.
That's more than they bought in their last three houses, I believe.
Their last house wasn't block and steel either.
Done down there? You got a question, do you, Don? Did you have a question?
I can't hear you.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Done?
The only thing I can say is that this is an extreme amount of money, but I do remember before COVID, since I talked to the mayor, he jogged my memory that we were figuring even then it was gonna cost us five hundred thousand dollars to replace that bathroom, so I just don't like spending that much money for a bathroom, but I realize that it is needed. I was down there for the past couple weeks and that park was busy.
It's a very busy park.
Any questions, Norman?
Did we explore whether there was, uh, a less expensive way? This comes out of taxpayer money. I, I feel it's an excessive amount.
Um, so a portion of it is taxpayer money. Um, two hundred thirty-six thousand is from ARPA, so that's federal funds that we've already received, um, which gives us the opportunity to make our funding go further. So the way that this could be less expensive would be to, uh, reduce the quality of the materials and the overall quality of construction, which would really just push the costs out further because we'd have more maintenance costs sooner, uh, but they'd be realized, uh, further into the future. We could also, um, cut the service of the building. So this building is designed to have four, uh, independent restroom units. We could cut that to two, but that would reduce from the current service that our existing building has.
Did you say that, uh, three, two hundred and thirty-six thousand are coming from federal funds?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. I thought this is all from, uh, public tax.
You got a question, Jackie?
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering about the other little restroom that's over there in that same part.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's pretty dilapidated. I don't know if that's any older than...
I think they were constructed at the same time. I know they were both grant-funded, and I think it was that same grant. I could be wrong, um, 'cause I think there were a couple grants that were used for that.
I just wondered if that one was old enough to maybe receive some funds to update it in any way from...
Um, not if it's the same age.
Right, right, that's what I was wondering.
But we could, you know, in a few years, maybe it will be. Um, so we could see if we wanted to do something similar out there as well, or maybe something smaller. I'm not as familiar with how much that gets used 'cause it's a little further out. I'm sure it does by softball people all the time, and it is a long ways to go from that field back up to the other restroom.
Well, even if we reconstruct it, I mean, we could...
But I, I'm sure there's something that we could do to at least improve it.
Yeah, even just paint. I mean, I don't think it's very good in there.
Well, that, that building's a little more unique compared to that bathroom too, because there's, there's picnic area underneath there.
Yeah, it's attached to the pavilion.
Yeah, that, that, where over towards the fountain, you have the pavilion, then you have the bathroom. Uh, the one over on Cook Road is more of a pavilion and bathroom.
Right.
And I think, you know, it's, it's, you can do wonders with paint. I, I think that, I think that is more handicap accessible than the one we have that we're looking at replacing. Did you have a question?
Yep, I have a still question. Uh, it's, it's gonna be difficult to vote for this, but, you know, you feel like you're getting, you know, 'cause it's government money we're using, you know, the, the construction companies seem to be, I hate to use the word, feel like we're being raped, but they're, I've, even somebody said at one of the meetings, well, it's a government thing and then we wind up paying more, which, which is sad. That, one thing I did notice on, and I, and I, that building's gotta be replaced, so it's gotta be done. But on the west elevation, just below the, where the, you know, the peak is, they have a cedar trim board that needs to be stained or painted. Uh, here it is, the, almost the highest point in the thing, and then we're gonna have to stain or paint it. I mean, you know, you could get a Trex board that looks like, you know, that's ma- it looks like wood, that could look like, you know, instead of half a cedar board, you could put that up and, but it might cost us another fifty thousand dollars to put that up there, so. But I've been thinking, that, here is the highest point that, at that point, that we're gonna have to paint or maintain.
Well, the only purpose of that is to match the historic building that we already have there, um, that some people call the arts building. Um, the architects wanted to bring in some of those features. We talked about making it a different material and went back to the wood, and I can't specifically remember why. Um, but it doesn't have a structural purpose.
Right.
Um, and we did talk about maintenance of it, um, and determined it wasn't a significant issue, and I wish I could remember more of the details of the conversation. Um, beyond that, Travis, do you remember? Were you in that meeting?
I think it's just the architectural accent.
Yeah.
For the building, it's not really...
But you're familiar with Trex, the Trex board that for decking and stuff?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, I'm not.
Well, instead of, you know, wood, you have this Trex that's a plastic, that's made recyclable, and it looks like...
We can ask about it.
I don't, I don't know how many residents are gonna say, you know, that would look a lot better with a cedar board that they have to paint or stain now, and that, that's just my point. Uh, it might be a silly point. Like I said, it might cost twenty thousand dollars more to do that, so.
We can ask about exchanging it for a, a different material.
That's one of the things I was real impressed, years ago when they built the bathroom at Titan Park, they put some cedar on that. If you go down there and look at it right now, the building looked great, except where the cedar's at, and that needs to be refinished. So, if we're gonna spend this kind of money, I'd like to see it put something up there that there's no maintenance to it, you know? That's just my...
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I have one. Uh, the federal funds sets for this building, is that related to the total amount, or is that the amount we would get, uh, regardless of how much we spent for those facilities?
So, we've already received it. Um, it was designated for this, uh, construction project in December of last year. The state required that we allocate the funds for something by the end of twenty twenty-three, um, so it was designated specifically for this project at that time.
So that's an independent amount. It does not matter how much we spent for the facility?
Yeah, there's not like a match or anything like that. Mm-hmm.
Well, and my thing on that is it's federal funds, which are tax dollars, and we got tax dollars, it's just tax dollars, either federal or city tax dollars, so I guess it doesn't matter, so. It's tax dollars.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Reluctantly, yes.
Barlow?
No.
Bowers?
Yep.
And Tassiba?
Yes. Okay, uh, next item up, item G, uh, entertain a motion to approve a proposal from In- In- Infrastructure Alternatives for Design Services to Improve the alum tank at the wastewater treatment plant for twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support. Motion by Barlow, supported by Rezegi, to approve the proposal from Inf- Infrastructure Alternatives Incorporated for Design Services to Provide, or to Improve the alum tank at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. Discussion.
Would that include the, uh, graves opening and closing, or is that some, like, completely separate from this?
This is, this is the wastewater treatment plant, Don. You're, you're one item past what we're talking about right now. We're on item H, the approve, oh, excuse me, item G, uh, proposed infrastructure alternative improvement design for alumina- uh, alum tank at the wastewater treatment plant. You see that G just above it?
Mm-hmm.
This one we're on. Any other questions? Roll call.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yep.
Brim?
Yes.
And Tassiba?
Yes. Item H, motion to approve the proposed three-year contract extension with Wickham Cemetery Care LLC for maintenance and section service at Riverside Cemetery for the original, for the original two thousand eighteen price of one thousand six hundred five dollars seventy-seven cents per week, or eighty-three thousand five hundred per year. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Support.
Okay, I have a motion from Rezegi, supported by Jarvis, to approve the proposed three-year contract extension with Wickham Cemetery Care LLC for maintenance and section services at Riverside Cemetery for the original two thousand eighteen price of one thousand six hundred five dollars seventy-seven cents per week, or eighty-three thousand five hundred per year. Discussion. You got a question, Don?
That's what I was asking. I got it a little bit behind. Uh, you say, does it include everything as far, you have opening graves and closing them, or is that completely different?
What, what, he charged, we have, we have a fee structure for opening and closing graves, we have a fee structure for sale of, of lots. The fee structure for opening and closing of graves is a pass-through, right?
Uh, I'm not very familiar with the cemetery costs.
Well, wha- what we charge in our schedule of charges, let's say, six hundred dollars. They charge six hundred dollars to bury somebody out there, open and close the grave. Well, what happens is that's six hundred dollars that's paid to the Well, what happens is that's $600 that's paid to the sexton above his normal fees. This fee is for, for all the maintenance out there, mowing, any other thing he might do out there, I don't know if he does any snow plowing in the wintertime, tree trimming, all that stuff, that's included in this, in this contract. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say that he does a real nice job out there at the cemetery, and he goes above and beyond what he's paid for to do it.
I'm just checking that he's offered to give us to us another, this is the second three-year extension I think he's done with us. Anyhow, no further discussion, roll call.
McLean?
I abstained.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Resegui?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yeah.
Brem?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
Tasova?
Yes.
Could the record reflect, please, that Councilmember McLean abstained due to a conflict of interest and recused for herself from the discussion as well, please?
Thank you.
Knew somebody'd mention it. Okay, item I. I entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Harder Warner to provide improved landscaping at the Riverside Cemetery North Entrance for some not to exceed $5,523.90.
So moved. Support.
Motion for a motion? Motion by Nesbit, supported by Brem. To approve the proposal from Harder Warner to provide improved landscaping at the Riverside Cemetery North Entrance for some not to exceed $5,523.90. Discussion. Anybody have any questions on this?
I have a question, sir.
Go ahead.
Is that, is that going to, do in any way, is it going to affect the graves that are there?
What this is, if you, if you go to drive in the north entrance, we have the big arch there, there's like a triangle shape there near the piers that pull up that arch. Well, we've never had real good luck with any landscaping out there, so we, we, the cemetery board through Travis, we let out bids to get somebody to come in and beautify that. And Harder Warner wants to come in, they want to plant some trees there and a lot of low, low plants, so that's board recommendation to approve that, so. Any other questions? Norman, you look like you've got something to say.
That was my question exactly where they were doing it, and you answered that.
Okay. So you can see on, on the illustration up there, those two trees right there, the bigger ones, will be right, I think those are going to be right behind the arch or right in line with the arch, but Harder Warner did a real nice job designing what they're going to put there.
They do a good job.
Yep. Oh, I think it's going to enhance the interest of the cemetery. No further comments, questions? We have a motion by Nesbit, supported by Brem, to approve the proposal for Harder Warner to provide improved landscaping at Riverside Cemetery North Entrance for some not to exceed $5,523.90. No further discussion, roll call.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Resegui?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yep.
Brem?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yeah.
Antasova?
Yes. Okay, next item. Motion to authorize the Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Association Agreement and the City of Hastings' participation therein. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nesbit?
Support.
Supported by Brem. To authorize the Michigan Mutual Aid Alarm System Association Agreement and the City of Hastings' participation therein. Questions? Haven't heard Mark talk yet tonight.
Quick overview of what it is?
Yeah, yeah, give us a quick overview of what it is, we all know.
It's a state-run mutual aid system throughout the whole state. So an example would be, for instance, they were activated and they were sent, some departments were sent out to Texas for the overflow, or they were, there are some rescue crews went down to Papa on that area for the tornadoes. So what it, what it does, you know, if we had a large event here that we just don't have the local resources, even with the local departments to come and help us out, we can contact the network operations, send them, tell them what we have, and then they would reach out to the appropriate departments, asking them if they would help the city out before they probably ready, wherever we need to help them. So there's no cost to this. It actually gives a little bit of cost protection, avoids cost of coverage. And it would, as the local departments come on board, we have, there's three other departments that are ready to come on board when we start this, that would supersede any agreement we have with that. We would just use this agreement instead of the individual agreement.
Any questions? Okay, we have a motion by Nesbit, supported by Brem, to authorize Michigan Mutual Aid Alarm Box, Alarm, Aid Box Alarm System Association Agreement and the City of Hastings' participation therein. No further questions or comments, roll call.
Resegui?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Brem?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yeah.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Tasova?
Yes. Item K, entertain a motion to set a public hearing for May 28, 2024 at 7:00 PM to determine the necessity of a special assessment district for downtown parking areas. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Brem, supported by Resegui. Did Brem?
I did.
Yeah.
He was saying it at the same time, so I was...
Well, see, I hear, I'm right here, there's a left here.
That's right.
Motion by Brem.
That must be why they're talking loud.
Well, I got a problem because this one talks to this one.
Motion by Brem, supported by Resegui, to schedule a public hearing for May 28, 2024 at 7:00 PM, determine the necessity of a special assessment district for downtown parking areas. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same. Staff presentation of policy discussion, city manager report. I think we never get to her.
So I wanted to let you know that Government for Tomorrow will be doing a presentation at the high school this Wednesday to talk about what they do and to generate interest in having some members serve on some of our boards and committees that we have here in the city. So hopefully that will lead to some good connections and students that we can put on several of our boards and committees there. I also wanted to let you know that there is a survey available regarding the design for Tangle Town. That survey is available through this Wednesday, so if you have the opportunity to take that, especially if you have kids that you know who use it frequently, or you go there with children, we would appreciate having your input in that survey. I'm also continuing the search for a new clerk treasurer. We did an interview a week or so ago that didn't pan out, so I'm currently working with Gov HR to identify some of their candidates that they've had and some of their other search processes to see if they would be interested in the position. I've gotten some feedback on that so far. I'm awaiting some additional feedback. We'll see if that leads to anything. If not, we may do a more substantial, traditional search process using a recruiter, because our postings, although we posted them in many different locations, didn't generate a lot of result. So we'll be going in that direction with that search. I also wanted to thank the board members of the LDFA. They very thoughtfully considered their role and their purpose and mission of the LDFA, and many of them served in that capacity for several years, and I want to thank them for their contributions to the economic development and success that we've had in the city.
That's it?
Unless you got a question?
I think there's more.
There's always more, but...
Also in your packet, you have Director Tate's monthly report. Anybody have any questions of Travis? Do you have anything to add, Travis?
Nothing to add.
Any questions, Travis? Prior Chief Jordan's monthly report is in your packet. Do you have anything to add, Chief?
Yeah, just, just one comment there. I'd mentioned that we would be transitioning over to the state eight hundred mega system in May. We completed that last Monday, so if you have it, this last month, it's working very well.
Good. I'd like to be the first to welcome your new firefighters. Any questions of Chief Jordan? Also in your packet is Peggy Heatherling's monthly report. Anything to add, Peggy?
Yes, you're all invited. On June 6th, the, our library has been selected to be the location for Miranda from Wood TV8's summer reading kickoff. So the cameras will be there, she'll be there, and we're going to have a big event.
Oh, and you got a time on that?
I wish I did. I can't remember. I want to say it's like 2:00, but it might be 3:00.
We'll find out and get back to you.
I think we have one more meeting this month, so you can let us know that.
Yes, I'll let you know.
Okay. Any questions of Peggy? Reports of communication. Item A, April 18, 2024, draft DDA minutes. Item B, April 25, 2024, draft minutes of the LDFA board meeting. Item C, May 1, 2024, draft library board minutes. And item D, May 2024 calendar. Do I hear a motion to accept, place these four items on file?
I like the motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, to accept items A through D and place on file. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All the same. Public comment.
Joel in Centerville Township, you will want to tune into tomorrow's commissioner's meeting during public comment. That is what I will say.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Thanks for coming. Mayor and council comments. Anything to say tonight? Bill?
I'm all sorts, sir.
I've got a couple, three. I've been asked why I wasn't running for council by my, some, some of my constituents, and so I thought it'd be easier to just tell them out here than keep answering phone calls. The reason I'm not running is because I missed the deadline, and I sent my wife down to get a, to get a thing, and I, they informed us that we had missed the deadline. Then I decided I would probably run in for a vote, or a write-in, but there's two people running, so I'm just going to step out. And I've enjoyed myself with all those people and the things we've accomplished, and I hope that someday we can carry it on. The other thing is, what about that stuff up on South Jefferson on the front yard?
Sir, I'll get with you after the meeting, let you know exactly what's going on.
Okay, I'm waiting. Oh, and the other thing was in the last, Michigan Women won the Big Ten National Softball Tournament.
They did, they did. And I want to, I want to go a record down in saying I appreciate all these years you and I have been on this board together, and I will miss you. Jordan?
Yeah. I just wanted to take this time to express that since, when my family moved to Hastings in, I want to say 1994, we would routinely walk down to Fish Atrey Park, and it was a beautiful park, and it's good to see that the city is finally putting some money into it again.
Al?
No comment.
Jackie? Norman?
I just want to say I appreciated working and serving with Don Bauer, and I appreciate all that he and Linda have done for the community of Hastings over the years.
John?
No comment.
Well, really nothing coming up. My grandson playing baseball, he's doing a great job. Anything else coming for a council? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
Don't everybody jump in?
Word by Barlow to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.